Seven o'clock, this January third, 2022. Our first appointment this evening is we have Lieutenant James O'Leary from the State Police here. And for those who don't know, there was a motor vehicle accident that involved a bicyclist and unfortunately resulted in a fatality. And Lieutenant O'Leary was integral into the discovery of who the person who committed the crime was and was able to put that investigation to bed very quickly through his efforts. And we wanted to take this time to recognize him not only for his efforts, but also our police department's efforts in that investigation. And if I could call Lieutenant O'Leary up. I'm just gonna read this. And we'll have Chief Briggs come up as well. As well.
Who's up? And Major Crime.
Okay.
I'm the commander of Major Crime. Subsequently since this investigation started, jailer was sergeant at that time, he did the homicide investigation and now is kind of promoting over to G.
Okay, great. So this award of excellence is presented to Lieutenant James G. O'Leary in recognition of your outstanding dedicated efforts and success of the investigation involving the death of retired Sergeant Donna Briggs. We representing the town of Kingston, New Hampshire are very appreciative and grateful. And on behalf of the Kingston Select Award, I present this to you as well as the police department. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna take a picture of this.
What are you here for?
Hey, what's a news editor always a news editor, right? And then look at the names afterwards. This is great.
Can't get me an L.O.
Don't worry, Chief, I don't get you anywhere I want to. There we go. Thank you very much, Joe, congratulations.
I was just talking, I just wanna say something quickly. I was just talking to the chief. We walked in here and, you know, we've worked a lot of cases throughout the state, you know, throughout my career. Kingston is, this is the first time, I think, that I worked a case in Kingston. And I can't begin to tell you how great it was to work with such professional people. And it really is, this all happened because of the hard work that the Kingston PD did. I did put some pieces together, but they went out there, hit the road, really did a lot of hard work. And we worked together side by side for hours and days to each other. So it really is not, it's not just me, obviously, but your PD is phenomenal to work with and your people were great too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I think when we work these cases, it's, they're very complex and there's a lots, a lot of things happening at the same time. And we are sergeants, we put a lot on our shoulders as far as responsibility. We come into a place where, like he said, we haven't done before. We have to learn faces, run into capabilities, plug in those parts where they need to go, and then bring our own resources in. And in this case, we had resources throughout the state. And he was integral because, partly because he was a member of Troop G, which does the commercial vehicle enforcement. He was already a member of that before he came to Major Crime. He then left us to become a sergeant in that unit. And then we brought him back to do homicide work because we need people with these varied experiences throughout the division. So we came in with that, but he's also a member of the car unit, which is collision analysis reconstruction. So that was an important component in this. And really, we've expressed to now Lieutenant O'Leary is, this was so important because he has to manage all these as we do within homicide, but he had these little nuances of expertise that he brought to this case in order to identify the perpetrator. And we had no idea who this could have been. All we had was a victim off the side of the road. And he did a tremendous job of those resources, his knowledge, his expertise. And then what we do in homicide, we bring it all together and making the components work. And very quickly, we had answers that we didn't have in the beginning. So when the chief brought this up about recognizing him, a lot of times people in our unit, we don't get that recognition till further down the road because they wait for all the core proceedings to play. Usually it's a year or two. And by that point, we've moved on, you know, very quickly to our next case. So I do thank the chief for bringing this forward so quickly and recognizing the work that he did with our group and with the various groups that plugged into it to come to a resolution very fast. Because as you know, the longer it takes, the more likely we're not gonna identify someone. So it's really attributable to Lieutenant O'Leary and the Kingston Police Department and the hard work that they did. So thank you for recognizing, taking your time out.
Absolutely.
That means a lot.
Appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you. Again, I can't say enough about the PD here. You got, they're great to work with and that doesn't happen everywhere we go. And you guys should be very proud of the guys that you have worked with.
Well, we certainly are. You know, thank you very much, you guys for being here tonight and why we could share this to you and, you know. The one thing I see is our community overwhelmingly supports our police officers and we wanna reiterate that spirit and recognize the work that you guys do in concert with our guys. So thank you again.
Thank you so much.
I can't actually have a screw.
Okay, I think that's reported here.
Yeah, so.
We have an appointment for thirteen Wadley Point Road, but that is rescheduled to next meeting week, next week's meeting. That too. Which brings us to our first public comment of the evening. Mr. Russman, Mr. Sandler.
Today I was contacted by the state, the Andrew Dam Division, that the folks control the water levels. They control the dam at Kingston Lake, different dams. They brought up a problem which I knew about, I was gonna be in here a few weeks ago, but wasn't feeling well to bring it to your attention. The outlet to Kingston Lake is Follybrook, runs out of Kingston Lake at the dam where the boat landed, crosses one twenty-five, basically goes into the Powell River. Somewhere's down there, there's a substantial beaver dam that needs to be addressed. The dam division is not their job, the highway department is not my job. Someone needs to take care of it. The level of Kingston Lake right now is about a foot higher than it should be. The state cannot lower the level of the water because of the beaver dams. And go back a little bit, two years ago, there was at least five dams that the state took out when they replaced or rebuilt the culverts underneath through one twenty-five. The state dam division contacted conservation and I don't think they liked what they got for answer because it's something that needs to be addressed immediately. It needs to be addressed every day until the beavers go away or the dam stays open. So someone needs to go down there and break that dam every day for the next six months. Doesn't matter if it's snow, doesn't matter if it's cold, doesn't matter if it's twenty below zero. Phil, you know the deal. You've broken, you're taking care of beavers on your property. So it got to my attention, they're concerned with the level of Kingston Lake. Mr. Russman wants to chime in, we can't get the water out at this time of year. If you have a heavy snow load and a quick melt in the spring, the level of Kingston Lake's gonna rise rapidly. You're gonna have septic systems underwater and wells underwater. So not my wells, not my septic system, but sure don't want to pollute Kingston Lake, which runs into the Powell, which pollutes Powell Pond, creates more weed growth. So I guess, I'm bringing the problem forward, I don't have a solution. I know passing a regulation two or three years ago restricting beaver trapping surely hasn't helped the matter. In fact, it's hurt because there are no trappers in the town of Kingston unless they're hired.
Or legal?
Well, they can do it legally, but they don't know where they can trap because they do a lot of research, owns what land, where you get permission from.
Does fishing game get involved with something like this? Can they?
Not effectively.
Okay. He says from experience.
Yep. So that's problem number one that needs to be addressed.
Can we take them one at a time or you wanna get them all out at once?
Well, I got three more beaver dams in the same dam. Great Pond Road, Kelly Brook. Somewhere's, actually, I think you can see it in here in photography, downstream of Great Pond Road on Kelly Brook. There's a substantial beaver dam, beaver population in that area that's holding half moon pond higher than it should be, which could present a problem. And also, that one is actually doing damage to the road. We put a new culvert in there about five years ago, six, seven years ago. Because of the raised water level, I think it's affecting the stability of the road. Maybe up to a foot or two. If you drop down Great Pond Road, you'll see there's about an inch and a half where the road is actively settled in the last year or so. That's an issue. And then the last one that I know is an issue is on North Road at the town line. It abuts the Focus Land, it's right at the town line, it's on Little River. That's holding about a foot and a half, two feet of water. That's affecting the culvert that we just replaced on North Road. Both of those culverts that I referenced, two hundred thousand dollar culverts, when we did them, if we have to renew them, they're probably gonna be half a million dollars each. So we're talking real money, real damage. I don't have a solution, but the one on Follybrook, I'll go back to the first one. I think the dam, I've sent my guys walking down the street, we can't get to it real quick. They use, the beavers used to dam right beneath the power lines. And if I got, mother may I from the landowner, I can get out there and remove the dams. I can't do it anymore. There is probably a can't get to. Possibly get to that one through the Box property off of.
Small Box.
Small Box, I'm sorry. Yep. I think that's the best access to that one. But that would take permission and I haven't explored that as far as getting an excavator down that file. Plus, the state doesn't like me using an excavator on the dams, so I wish we were on TV right now, but that's reality.
Do we know whose property that is on?
I believe it's on Box and the other person is Rachel Sanner. I don't think she's available to give you permission to go on her property. I think there's medical issues there.
Phil.
I think there's an aunt that's involved in that property too, I'm not sure.
Me, other me.
So there's your beaver problems.
Deflective.
This can get expensive. I think we shot ourselves in the foot by restricting trapping, but I think the fishing game, myself, a few other folks tried to speak against it, we lost. Owners decided that, so.
Well, when a warrant article is deceptively written, that's what you get.
That's right, exactly, exactly.
Okay, so Follybrook, Kelly Brook, and what was the other one?
Little River at North Road is town line. What happened, the big dam on Focus property went out this summer. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And I think the beavers have moved upstream.
So we own the property that the, on the Little River?
Actually, we don't, you know, if it's downstream, it's, so you can put the responsibility on the landowners, whoever owns the body property, but technically the state owns the riverbed. It bothers them up to the.
Water.
I want, I want, I want. Try to make them respond to all the beaver dams. I don't think you'll, I don't think that's gonna work for you.
Well, the liability is on the landowner if it's affecting other people's property and wells and things like that. I do know that the fishing game will put that on, but.
But the state could contact me today, so that's why I'm here, to bring this up. Otherwise, it would be on your agenda. So it's something, I don't think they need a decision. It's not efficient until the water goes up and warms in spring. We get some melt and, you know, re-losenow and quick some melt. We've all seen it.
You mean like when it warms up to forty-five degrees for three days in December?
Yeah. Well, if we had two or three feet of snow, that melted, it would be an issue. Would that have been?
So any proposals?
I don't. I hate coming here with a solution. I mean, I'll obviously explore some options, but. No matter what you do, the beavers have to go. Anyone like you or me, Phil, that have done this job, know that your work, the risk of your life tearing down beaver dams, it will never defeat the beavers. And there is no beaver receiver pipe that's gonna take care of any one of these projects and keep the water down. The one happening, you would have to put in six twenty-four hundred pipes in order to handle the flow that goes out of these baths. And that's not the big one. The one on Follybrook, I have no idea what the flow rate of the water coming out of Kingston Lake is, but it's huge. And no beaver receiver pipe is gonna work that and keep the water down and keep the water flowing, which will let it keep the water down.
It's a good one.
Yep.
Questions from the board?
I'll get back to you, but obviously I just.
Yeah, you wanna take a ride tomorrow? Go check these out?
Second item is truck repairs. You folks are aware, my, my big truck's is down, owner problems, but hopefully it's as simple as a head gasket, could be as serious as putting a power plant in it. I've done some more research. We better really consider if we had put a power plant in it, because even ashes costs about forty thousand dollars. Yeah, yeah. So we'll explore that soon, but I don't know exactly what the problem is. I hope it's head gasket, it's gonna be relatively cheap, simple fix. Got a P.O. on your desk somewhere, it's for one of my trucks for fifteen hundred dollars.
Should be in the blue.
Why should put it in my desk?
In the blue folder.
I said, this is a blue truck that I'm running, trying to try to clean to legal, follow the rules. It's hard, here it's hard.
Nope.
Well.
Did we say that last week?
Well, I've got a motion to allow the road agent to spend up to fifteen hundred dollars repair truck four from the highway department.
Still moved.
Same. Just a point of order, I believe you have that authority to spend up to.
Not without your approval. Thousand dollars, that would be in here, mother may I.
That's three thousand.
No, we didn't move that number yet. Maybe you should, but.
I think you should, but right now it's a thousand dollars, so. And I just got scolded by a findings administrator for breaking down.
We got a motion to second, further discussion. Do you have any questions of Rich on that one?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Third item, I've approached by folks in Sunshine Drywall, only really one person. They want to reduce the mom's salt in the culvert, that Gary, which is right next to Country Pond. I have no issue doing that. I plan on putting up low-salt area sign wherever we start. Just wanna make sure the board doesn't have an issue with that. It is not, like I explained to folks, it's not gonna be no salt area. Like the storm we had a few days before Christmas when there was a quarter inch of clear ice on those roads and you absolutely couldn't drive one of, you're gonna see salt on those roads to make them passable. Because we need to maintain police and fire and emergency services. But doing my best to restrict salt and if there's other neighborhoods, I have that problem, it saves money. It's just you're gonna get less service, you don't get the same service.
Do you have to push back from any neighbors, do you think? I don't know the neighborhood, so I can't entirely live there.
So where we're talking about, there's only two houses on the culvert set. Unless we, unless all the folks in the neighborhood want to go to the neighborhood, which again, I don't care. Makes life easier if I'm about to take you on the road.
Yeah, but you, you still have to do.
I have to, yeah, I have to make them safe, they have to stay safe. Absolutely. All right, that's it, thank you.
So Rich, on the low-salt thing.
Yep.
Obviously posting it'll make the residents aware, but is there a way that we can make our emergency services aware ahead of time?
Yeah, I'll let both chiefs know. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, happy year.
Any more public comment? Seeing none, committee liaison reports. I missed the inspector's meeting.
We had a brief inspector's meeting because so many people were absent, basically. Nothing really came out of it. Haven't had any other meetings, but other curves.
I haven't either, but we've got the solar, I have a couple things I wanna ask about there.
Yep, okay, whole business, solar committee?
Yeah, I called all the, I don't know if you got another name on here, it looked like it's Susan, but everyone's all set to meet on the twenty-first and I had two questions related to that subgroup. Number one, are we gonna televise those meetings? And number two, do we need to keep minutes?
As televising would be an added expense. I don't think it's, we didn't do that for the fire station committee or anything like that. Were they keeping minutes for those meetings? So I think we're required to keep minutes.
So who, I mean, as for volunteer amongst the group, is that who you want me to do?
I think that would be a good start if it becomes an issue then.
Because I, I'm assuming I'm gonna temporarily chair, I'd like to have someone else within the group, but you can't take minutes and participate in a meeting. It doesn't work. You gotta do one or the other. So we can record it and see someone transcribe, but then we have to pay someone to transcribe them. We could do that. I'm bringing it up because I don't want, this before we meet, you can think about it, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we will by next Monday.
Yes.
Because the solar, the solar panels would meet on the twelfth, that Wednesday, Rachel is coming Wednesday. So we can make a decision next week, but you need to know what to do.
Looks like we could get an audio recorder nowadays, you know, like a Siri type thing where you just talk into it that'll pick up everybody in the.
Whatever your pleasure is, but it's, you could, we have to buy the recorder and have it transcribed.
Well, I'm saying get something that'll transcribe it as people talk. Like Siri on your phone, you know, how that works. It's about it and something.
The nineteen eighties awake, hop on in.
But then you have to.
You think that works, okay. And I don't mean that you can't record, you can record on those things.
Yeah.
But can you hear everybody in the room talking? No.
I mean, I know it's what Ellen uses to produce minutes, but.
She has it as a backup, if I remember, she's gotta televise, she's got a number of things, it's not the same. Having dealt with just a recorder at a zoning board, trust me, it's not the same. So if you want accurate meetings and record of the proceedings, then we have to do more than that little box for sale.
We got a week to figure it out.
And we got a week to figure it out.
Okay. Got all your head?
That's it.
Okay. As far as the recycling committee, twenty January at seven o'clock in this room is where we'll be meeting. Susan, if you could just let everybody know who wanted to be involved, we'll just have everybody come to that meeting. It's my intention to do a presentation on the issue and just, because I find that some people just wanna find out what we're doing and not really.
Yeah, contact everybody.
Yeah, and just notify them of when it will be and then we can find out who's actually interested in serving and set up the schedule from there.
Well, I did that with my group, they were all but one were interested, but it really came down, that was a lot.
I have a lot of notes on here of people who are from East Kingston or just wanna know what the committee is doing.
Yeah, the East Kingston guy, he said he won't be able to vote, he said he'll come and participate.
Yeah, and I mean, I would prefer that the committee be open to anyone who would like to attend.
Right, it is, it's a public meeting, absolutely. Yep, it should be posted.
But I think people have some confusion as to what the intention, I think the solar committee is fairly cut and dry as what you guys are trying to do, whereas I think the recycling, there's a lot more backstory that people need to be aware of and the cost that the town is occurring currently and will be in the future. So.
So your first solar is on the twelfth, did you say, or the twenty-first?
The solar is on the twelfth, Wednesday, a week in Wednesday.
And that's at seven P.M.?
Seven P.M., here in the town hall.
All right, so I'll post those and you've got, you've contacted everybody that.
I have, yes. You know, after that first meeting, I put, you got some kind of release that to the general public that the solar committee will be meeting monthly at such and such time. You're welcome to come and participate, do the same thing for the landfill if you have a regular meeting time. And I, I'm not saying I wanna do it after that first meeting, because I don't know if the group wants to change.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get, basically a core group put together and then develop our schedule from there.
And I'm thinking that if we have ten, I may have six regulars and four alternates for voting, because if you're making, if, we're gonna be making a presentation of the voter select at some point and a recommendation. So I would imagine that you'd have some voting members and non-voting members, but alternates certainly, I don't want to disenfranchise them, I want them to have an ability to participate and speak and provide information, because I'm out of my comfort zone on solar panels, I know nothing, except what little I learned while I was a library trustee, and that's still very minimal, being honest, so. I'm looking to my group to help, to find a solution. Okay, that's it for me.
Any issues with us proceeding that way? Okay. New business, we have unanticipated funds. It would be the second payment for the.
The Santa Claus fund?
No, we already got that, I believe.
The second payment? No, the first payment.
Or we can't because we don't have a Sam's number or a Dunn's number or something else, right? Has that been resolved?
She's, she's got something else for you to sign today to authorize her to work with the fire department once, so that you can go forward. She's still fighting with them over the main number.
So we've gone from our number to the police number to the fire department number?
Yeah, technically we had three, but she's still trying to get the town's number.
Yeah, I think she's trying to get, use the town of Kingston.
Is she hung up on that? Who cares, as long as it comes to the town. I mean, either that or you gotta, you gotta go to Jean Chahid's office. I mean, either that or you gotta, you gotta go to Jean Chahid's office or somebody like that to get it squared away. This, this is taking way too long, way too long.
Basically, just not getting, not getting answers, so.
Right, so the fire has one, I have one, and the town of Kingston had one.
Well, it's not the town of Kingston that's looking for it, it's the fire department that's looking to get some stuff done.
Right, so she wants to rectify that by reading the state.
Read state of the town of Kingston.
Yeah, she's still working on it.
Okay, well, that wasn't the unanticipated funds that we're going to discuss in new business, so we'll just leave that as an open action item. It's the second payment for the damaged cruiser, and I don't see that in front of me here.
That should be in the orange, I think, just, she just handed it to me today. It might be in your folder, actually, if it's not there in the orange. It's got a yellow sticky note on it, I think I might have put it in your folder, Phil, if I let you to speak to it.
Found it. The total amount is $8,621.95, and this would be from Trimax.
I move the adoption of unanticipated revenue for the second payment on the cruiser of $8,621.95.
Second. Okay, motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? One. Okay, motion carries. Alright, board business, warrant articles. There are copies in there.
One thing that's not on here that we talked about, and that was for the work for the barn, that's where we're going to make that go to warrant article.
But we were putting it up.
Who is? We normally put them up, don't we? Don't slightly normally put the, like the museum spending, that's from the selectmen.
Didn't the committee put one together? I mean, I don't mind endorsing it from the selectmen, they don't want to get the signatures, but. No, okay.
Typically what it is, is Rich makes a recommendation on the amount of money and then we take it to voters to see if they're okay with spending it.
Okay, alright, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Because, I mean, I don't know if we've got any estimates back yet, other than the.
Don't the business go on the 12th? For the whole project or just a partial project?
Well, do we want it to pass?
Yep.
Okay, they're partial.
Question for you, Rich, on, on these, because you mentioned the highway department equipment capital reserve fund and the building maintenance funds. Were those amounts for buildings maintenance, $50,000, and equipment capital reserve, $100,000?
Equipment capital reserve, $100,000. The, I would, I would make the building maintenance, $100,000, and you have to put a, a line from the new fire station across the street, it's a special system. That's going to be at least $80,000, I think it's going to close to $120,000 with the base, with the up charge and all materials. And then we have the stairs, I don't know, probably a balance there, so I would make both of them $100,000.
I also left in the fire apparatus replacement fund, I wasn't sure, I, that hadn't been mentioned, but it's usually in there, I think.
Yeah, it's yearly.
I'm pretty sure the fire department's looking for $100,000 there.
I had it at 85, I think it should be $100,000.
I think he was going to up that.
Article 14, that's going to take a longest time, 45 minutes guaranteed, the rooster. You put your right foot in, you put your right foot out. Oh my goodness.
It's very preliminary, I just copied out the zoning articles that they had posted. I don't know if any changes were made or this is the correct wording, so I'll get them promoted at some point.
Well, as long as they're vague and unenforceable, that's the important. So they're in the spirit of all the other.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So the only one for the selectmen's warrant article, or nine, I don't think we're raising and appropriating the sum that's coming from an established.
Worded, so that it's coming from the.
Yeah, the Friends of Kingston, it's basis.
I have to look into the wording for that, I'll work with Timmy.
But you, just check a prior warrant article, I mean, I think you take the money out of the fund and they have the, the selected as agents to expend, something like that. We've done it before, so you don't have to re-then to re.
Yeah.
If, if, if you're not listed as agents to expend, uh, existing fund, with the I-iron fund for truck replacement in the building, you're listed as agents to expend. Then you just have to have a public hearing and you can withdraw the money from that account. If it's an existing fund that you do act every year and with no agents to expend, then you have to raise the appropriate, take that money out of that fund. Although it seems like you've known your regular program twice, that's, again, more in past history, that's what the DRA has always told us we had to do. Even though the money's existing in their bank account, that, you know, the cost aren't paid for and they pay their taxes to fund. You have to, again, it's a fire department gets that from every year if they want to buy a fire. If they're using appropriate, then people think they're buying a fire problem again, so.
But, but there, there's, there's no tax impact, then at the end, then you're good?
There is no tax impact, but you have to have the right wording and to, to have the authorization to withdraw the funds and to expend them. And it's coming from a fund that's already been taxed to the voters. 18 to 22 warrant, you just left those open, isn't it?
It was just, I was copying from a prior year, so they're just sitting there with nothing in them so far. Probably most of them are going to go, I know we've got a couple more petition articles that might come in.
Now, Article 50, that really is a petition warrant, as opposed to coming for a, for a warrant.
Um, that was from the homeowner that wants to change his zone.
Oh, down in Moonbusin Road?
Yeah.
Oh dear.
So, and I was going to ask Glenn today and I didn't get the chance, but I, I don't know, I, they have this, but I don't think it belongs at the front of the, it, it is a petition article, it's not a planning board article.
Oh my god.
Well, when was this submitted?
Um.
On time.
It was on time, yeah, I've got the.
Well, there's, for the zoning articles?
No, for the writing.
Petition warrant.
But a petition warrant article for zoning has to, by the 18th of December, doesn't it?
I think it might, I think, I think it was in for that, because you were trying to, I have to look at the actual articles, guys, dates.
Well, then, then Mr. Greenwood better get moving on this.
He came and got a copy of it from me today, because he couldn't find his copy, so he's aware of it.
Okay. Well, should be interesting.
As far as the barn goes, do we have a number from them on that, or?
That's what he was talking about, those bids aren't due. I thought we were going to get a preliminary number early.
But they talked about giving us a number, if they could get at least one estimate.
Work that in there somewhere.
Bernie is going to be aware of it, we're going to require a warrant article and then we're going to try to get some kind of number.
Anybody else? You got it, man? Okay. If you look in your packets, there is a schedule for 2022 that Susan has drawn up. This is an attempt to remove fluidity from our schedule.
But you know it's subject to change.
Absolutely.
Good night, Rich.
Ellie didn't catch that, December 26th is the holiday, so that's why we have to change that one, either before or after, I guess, or skip it, whatever you want to do.
This Saturday and the next Saturday, the days were supposed to be here.
Excuse me?
It's this one we have our budget hearing that we need to attend.
8th and the 15th.
That day is coming Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's here, right?
And it's here, correct, and we haven't seen that budget yet. Final one anyways, okay.
Any questions on that?
What did you want to do about the 26th? I mean, it's, we're at the end of the year, but you want to set that on the prior Friday?
No. It's Christmas, we don't need to be meeting.
You know, just skip it, that's two weeks off in a row, which is okay, we're going to meet.
Well, we haven't really had any barn murders the past like month, so I think we could probably get away with it.
Just skip it, and then if you need a special meeting, you can always add it in.
Correct, you're going to have, you're going to have, maybe we, we're going to have to have an in-conference meeting, maybe we can incorporate a department.
Yeah, I mean, there's one on there for the 29th at noon.
For in-conference, and maybe that same day we could do a department answer earlier before the in-conference, to be honest with you. How does that sound, Susan?
Whatever business.
Yeah, so that way, you know, if departments have an issue, they can come up, they want to clean up. It will, if we go into in-comparing funds after that, then they will have participated in whatever, hopefully before then, but.
Is it required that we wait till the last day to in-compare funds?
I think it's kind of foolish myself, but it's.
Yeah, shouldn't we do the day before in case we have an issue, like the 28th or?
Well, the.
It goes to the end of the month, so just want to be as close to the end of the month as possible to catch everything.
Well, that would be one day with that, and that way if we had an issue, we go to the next day.
Well, this is the 29th, so it gives us.
Two days.
If you can believe it, it's actually an improvement from when Donna and I started, what we were meeting, like New Year's Eve.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, at the last minute, so you got a year to plan ahead.
Actually, December 29th, is Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
So it gives us Friday, okay.
All right, leave it at the 29th and.
I guess it's Friday, so.
Yeah, and do, if we want, we can do a department head prior to it, or no, how does the case may be, if we need it, we can do it.
Let me see what the need is, closer to the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. So we'll meet the first two Mondays in December and the last Thursday at this point. May have to put something else in there, though. Let's really go into sign. Okay.
That would bring us to our second public comment portion of the evening. Public has no comment. Correspondents.
The.
The inspection station.
I talked to Mark Vines, he said that was for personal use of his vehicles. That was what we needed before we could sign off on it.
So you won't be open to the general public? Okay.
He said as far out as he may go as soon as mother's car or something like that. He said they're not trying, they're not trying to start a business.
I guess my question would be, is this our authority or the planning board's?
I think it's our authority in that the planning board makes a recommendation, and they wouldn't make the recommendation because they didn't have the details. Now, if you want me to take it back to the planning board tomorrow night and then sign it next Monday, that's fine, too.
I think that'd probably be the right course of action, just because.
Actually, it's just your signature, right?
There's just one signature.
Yeah, so you could stop and sign it anytime after we get there, so we don't get a week.
Okay, can we do a motion from the board to codify that?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? One. Okay, uh, request to unmerge lots.
Is this kind of late in the year, don't we have a?
I don't think we possess the authority anymore.
They applied on the day before the deadline, and all they have to do is apply by the end of the year.
I had a very long conversation with these people, so did Glenn Greenwood. And I tried to convince them that they were making a mistake, because they're going to end up with four useless lots. Off of, I mean, they're small lots. And they still think that they'll be easier to get rid of that way, because they can sell them off to the abutters. And it's their right to do, as far as I can understand. And Glenn Greenwood told them the same thing when they came up here and talked to him.
So they won't be able to keep it in current use, so they're going to pay higher rate of taxes on it?
They'll have to take some of them out of current use, because they're under five acres. It's a farm road, so some of them become landlocked.
Well, we can't, we can't create landlocked parcels.
That's fine.
That's, I, that's what I've always been told, is, and it's been repeatedly.
I, I don't think we can act on this, and I'd like to see a map, to see how the lots spaced out and what they have.
And as far as the current use, I wasn't sure, can they, as long as it's all under the same ownership, can it stay in current use if it adds up to, no?
I will take this by the planning board tomorrow night, too, since Glenn's already seen it, seeing what his feelings on whether we have the authority to.
Well, they, they've already made the deadline, so that part's the easy part, of whether, you know, we should kind of look into what it means and clearly explain to them what it means to them, if they still want it.
I did.
Okay.
I probably spent 30 minutes talking to them, Glenn's been every bit of that, if not more.
If not more, yeah. And I wonder, because the town salts the, the bounty land, they thought they could do, raise some money that way, I don't know. You know, people think funny things sometimes. Well, here's a map on the back, but.
It doesn't show what they're gonna split it into.
Yeah, no, we need to see what, what is and what, what they want it to be.
All right, my question about the landline.
Yeah, we had to take that question to our legal department for the Solar Hills development, because that had created a landlocked parcel. Okay.
This was quite a letter.
Want to talk about that one in non-public? Well, I have it on good authority that they haven't contacted the cemetery section regarding this.
Maybe the previous one.
Maybe. Uh, I will investigate this for the board and bring it back next Monday.
Okay.
Uh, there is a board here, or a letter here for the board's signature regarding three to Boston Road as discussed. And what is the revised deed? Is this the one from the auction?
Yes, that one lot, when it came through on the deed from Sumner, it didn't have the right acreage on it. He had, um, done all of the merged original lots, and he had to do some title search and fix it, so that's just come back to it.
So Sumner's good with it?
Yes, he re-issued it for us.
Okay.
Moving through the minutes from the three meetings?
Back to the Dunn's number.
I'm sorry.
Um... Well, this says Dunn's.
Yeah, I probably did.
Entity covered by this letter, Dunn's number. We get a motion to authorize the chair to sign this further piece of paper to get us our Dunn's number or Sam's number.
It's approved. In a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, one. Okay.
All right, now, Ellen. Okay, through the minutes of the public and non-public sessions of December twenty-seventh and, uh, again on December thirtieth.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Uh, do we have one non-public item to discuss? Uh, the business of property. And what are your two?
Uh, personnel, both of them.
Okay. Uh, just an update.
We need to go into non-public.
No, I got one thing on, for public, um, as far as consolidated goes, uh, just trying to get legal advice from our N H M A representative. Wasn't available last week. So, trying again this week, was hoping to do it today, but that didn't happen. But, um, I'm just making sure that the entire procedure is followed correctly. Susan has created an Excel spreadsheet of that list. And I gathered three pretty telling photos of what a horrible outfit consolidated is. I've got one where, like, one of the poles is lawn darted off to the side. So, um, just wanted to keep the board up to speed on that. And anybody else got anything?
No.
Okay. Motion to go into non-public session to discuss legal and personnel matter.
One legal and two personnel matters, great. One legal and two personnel.
Second.
Second.
Okay, whole call vote.
Alencio?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Coles?
Yes.
And Leslie?
Yes.
Okay. That will conclude the public portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you very much for joining us.